Welcome to Peg's Fireside Chats with Candidates. I'm Joyce Short and my co-host is Ellen Pollavy. This evening, we'll be chatting with Kim Mosca-Ratolo. And Kim is an Emmy Award-winning journalist. She's also fought for a lot of social change. She's fought to combat climate change. She was the Legislative Committee Chair for New Yorkers Against Gun Violence. She was Vice President for the Manhattan Young Democrats. She's the founder of the Four Freedoms Democratic Club. And she also founded Yorkville By Local, which is an organization that helps support small businesses in her area. So, welcome, Kim. Can you tell us a little bit more about your background? And why you got into politics?
In 2014, I helped found the Four Freedoms Democratic Club, which has tried to be very active on the island. In fact, I remember the very first rerun meeting I ever went to was in 2014 as we were promoting the club. And since then, I've obviously been to many rerun meetings and volunteered at the Cherry Blossom Festival, campaigned at the farmer's market and at Roosevelt Island Day. And I've worked really hard to make sure that our club has a real presence on the island. 2015, I was elected Democratic District Leader in an insurgent campaign on a platform of transparency and ethics reform. And as a district leader, that is what I have fought for. I fought for more transparency in our county party. I took on our party leadership to ban paid lobbyists from serving in leadership roles. And that's the kind of fight that I'm hoping to bring to the city council. Most recently, I founded Yorkville By Local, which is a local advocacy group focused on promoting and protecting our local small businesses. So, you know, look, I'm running for city council because after 10 years of knocking on doors, making phone calls, going to Albany, I know that the best way to really have an impact is to be the person sitting in that seat, taking those tough votes and making sure that we're getting the resources to the people who need them. And I think that my history as a journalist and an advocate give me a really unique insight into how to fight for those things. So, I think what the city council really needs is an independent voice to go to City Hall and make sure that the government is working for all of us. So, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I am so looking forward to hearing from you about the issues that matter most to you and talking about my vision for the future of this city.
Excellent. Well, we're going to start with the issues that matter most to you.
Okay.
And if you could tell us, you know, pick the top three issues on your platform and let us know why they're important to you and what you're going to be doing about them.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I think first and foremost, COVID-19 recovery has to be at the top of everyone's agenda. So, that means really taking a hard look at our healthcare system, which was pushed to the brink over the last year with this pandemic. It also means preventing future health crises and working to make sure that we are really investing in our public hospital system. It means focusing on jobs, making sure that we have the kind of economic recovery that we're going to need to see because right now, so many businesses in the city, especially these small businesses, are hurting. So, I think COVID-19 recovery and everything that we're going to have to do to get this city back up and thriving again is going to be of utmost importance. Secondly, I think there really does need to be a focus on small business. And I know I spoke about it in terms of COVID-19 recovery, but the fact is, even before COVID-19, small businesses were really struggling in the city with rising rents, with, you know, competing with online retail and so many other things. And so, I'm really proud of the work that I've done and trying to help small businesses. As I said, founding Yorkville By Local. I recently put out a very in-depth small business plan that's on my website that I would love for you all to read, talking about how we can really invest in our small businesses and help them to recover. And then finally, I think the focus has to be on really investing in our public goods. So, that means our public parks, public housing, our green space, public transportation, of course, making sure that we are investing in all of these things that everyone in this city relies on. Because at the end of the day, that is, I think, part of what makes New York City such a special place. So, COVID-19 recovery, small businesses, and then, of course, investments in our public infrastructure and our public good, I think, are the top three things that I would focus on as a city council member.
Excellent. Well, that's a lot to handle.
Yeah.
I'm going to pass the torch right now to my buddy, to my buddy Ellen,
Sure.
who's going to get more into weeds of how we're going to go about doing that.
Sure.
Ellen, take it away.
Okay. That's great. Kim, you have been doing so many things on this, on this planet for so many years. I have seen you around forever. So, I thank you for all the hard work you've been putting in.
Of course.
I have a few questions for...
Sure.
It's not on your, it's not on your platform, but you have said that sanitation is the most important global, global issue that connects to everything in the city and in the Upper East Side. And I'd like to hear some more about that. I don't know if you remember saying that, but you did say it in a debate.
Yeah, well, you know, for me, I tie sanitation in with the broader issue of our environment and environmentalism. And so, in that regard, it is, it is tied into one of the most pressing things facing our society today, which, of course, is the environment and climate change. And so, to the degree that we need to really think about our waste management systems and how they relate to helping us, you know, fight climate change, I think it is extremely important. I have talked about wanting to, you know, serve on the sanitation committee, potentially chair the sanitation committee if that were a possibility, partly for that reason because I think there is so much that can be done with regards to the environment and climate change. But the reality is sanitation affects so much of our day-to-day lives. You know, New York City is just way behind the times when it comes to how we deal with our trash. And so, I'm hoping to bring some real common sense solutions that we can enact quickly in City Hall. You know, not only to make our trash collection more efficient, but also to boost our recycling and our composting program so that we can be more environmentally friendly for generations to come. I think Roosevelt Island gives us some really, you know, great ideas in that regard. You know, we know that Roosevelt Island has this very unique underground pneumatic sanitation system, which keeps the garbage off the streets, which allows the sanitation system to keep working even during inclement weather. I think that's remarkable. And I think that we are going to need innovative, bold ideas like that as we go forward. I would expand the city's recycling program and I would reverse the cuts that were made to composting program. I know Hockey Compost on Roosevelt Island has been doing remarkable work on that issue. We need to expand the program. I'd like to mandate citywide curbside organics separation and collection and create a citywide education plan on that issue, which I think will have an immediate impact on everybody's quality of life. And then finally, I talk a lot about this idea of containerizing our trash. You know, it's crazy to me that in the 21st century, the best idea we've come up with is just piling all of our trash on the sidewalk once or twice a week and waiting for people to come pick it up. I just think that there have got to be ways to do that better, to do it more efficiently. You know, containerizing the trash like they do in many European cities, I think, is one way that we can go about doing that. And I would like to explore that. So, I think sanitation is important. It's, it directly impacts our quality of life. It relates to, you know, how we deal with the environment in terms of dealing with our, with recycling and how we deal with our waste management. And so, I think it is really important. And I would love the city to really make it a priority going forward.
So, if you were on that committee, how would you look into all these projects?
Well, I think there's a few things. I mean, as I said before, you know, there are cities, especially in other countries, that are doing really remarkable work around this. So, you know, as I said, I think, you know, programs that mandate, you know, curbside composting, for example, could be a great way to do this. I think making sure that we're educating people on the issue, especially in schools, you know, utilizing the curriculum to really educate kids about the importance of protecting our environment, the importance of recycling, the importance of taking care of our planet, I think are all really important. Obviously, we want to be allocating resources. I mean, one of the biggest issues we have is funding. We know that funding for a lot of these programs was cut, especially this past year, because funding for a lot of things got cut in the wake of COVID-19. So, it's going to be about fighting for these programs in the budget, which I am, you know, ready, willing, and able to do. But I think ultimately, it's going to come down to making sure that we're investing the resources in these programs, that we're educating people about why they're so important. And then ultimately, we're just going to have to, you know, mandate it, much in the same way that we have, you know, mandated things like separating out recyclables and things like that to make sure that the city is doing its part. I think also the city itself, you know, could really do its part, you know, making sure that we are, you know, reusing things from the city's own waste stream, for example, making sure that the city as a whole is composting and recycling. I mean, I don't think that, you know, we're a really large city. We have so many agencies. I think that if the city itself were able to engage in a lot of these activities, I think it would set a really great example for the rest of the folks in the city. So, those are just some of the ways that I think I would try to approach this if I were lucky enough to serve in the city council.
Thank you. And so, you are, I, you're one of the only ones that has a restoring trust in government platform. And I'd like to hear more about this because I like the idea that you actually took a look at, at how government actually works in the city and had thought of different ideas to handle it. So, could you give us some ideas on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I think one of the biggest things that we struggle with right now is apathy from voters and from citizens. And part of that is that a lot of folks have just lost trust in the government and how government works. And I understand that. I mean, we see a lot of corruption. We see a lot of waste. We see a lot of things happening that shouldn't be happening. And, you know, quite honestly, a lot of people who were elected to serve us haven't always done, I think, a job worth respecting. And so, people tend to lose faith. But, you know, look, I, I have a fundamental belief that government can and should be a force for good in people's lives. And, and so, based on that belief, I think that it is on us to make sure that government works, that works well and works for the people. I looked at, for example, how the city council works. So, looked at some of the things, for example, that we could do at the city council level. So, for example, making sure that if a bill has majority support, that it makes it to the floor. And this seems like a simple thing, but it's actually very easy for the Speaker of the City Council to not bring something to the floor and to essentially hold it indefinitely in committee. I don't think that's right. I think that, you know, if there is a bill that has support, it should be debated and it should be voted on. And if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. But, you know, I'm tired of seeing great bills that languish in committee for years and years because the Speaker doesn't have an obligation to bring it to the floor. I think the city really needs to establish a very strong sexual harassment and a broad harassment policy, one that is clear, one that has very clear consequences. And I think that that process needs to be independent. Right now, it's on the other city council members to determine whether or not they should expel one of their colleagues. I don't think that's right. I don't think that they will be able to provide an independent or unbiased assessment of the situation. And so, I would like to see a truly independent process created that is clear and that has real consequences for people who harass their staff or really harass anybody in their role as a city official. And then we talked a little bit about member items. And I know Roosevelt Island, several programs on the island are beneficiaries of these member items that come from Councilmember Ben Kalos. And they fund wonderful programs. But I would like to see a process that's a little more objective and streamlined. Right now, it is completely at the discretion of the city council member. When you have a good city council member like a Ben Kalos or Keith Powers, it's great because they, you know, know what programs need help and they are willing to fund those programs. And that's great. But not every council district is so fortunate. And unfortunately, in years past, these member items have led to some corruption. And, you know, it's, it's easy to abuse the system if you're the kind of person who would do so. And so, I would like to see a system where it is a more objective process. Yes, the local city council member should have some input into that, no question. They know the district better than anybody. But I don't think that they should have full discretion over the process. And so, I would like to see that reformed.
Before you go on, let me just remind everybody that if you have a question that you'd like to ask, if we can, at the end, it depends on how many questions Ellen's got lined up and how long it takes Kim to respond. But if you put a question in the chat, we'll try and get to it before the, before the session is through today. So, by all means, you know, we're, we're happy to take your questions if we can get to, get to them as well. I'm sorry, Ellen, go right ahead.
Okay. Well, Kim, why don't you finish your thought?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had.
No, it's all right. The, the only other thing I was going to say is the other portion of that is a board of elections reform, which I know you would, you talked about a little bit.
Hold that thought.
I will.
Because I did want to ask you the difference between the discretionary funds
Yeah.
that you were just talking about and the funds that are given out during participatory budgeting. Can you explain the difference? Or is it the same funds or is it different funds?
So, I mean, ultimately, they're, they're not exactly the same, right? Member items are different than participatory budgeting, but ultimately, any council member who opts into doing participatory budgeting can use up to $1 million of these funds that they are given for specific types of projects that are voted on by folks in the council district. And you don't have to be an actual registered voter. I think if you are 14 and above and you live in the district, whether or not you're a citizen, because this is not, you know, a government election. It's just an election on projects that should be focused on. So, I mean, they are both discretionary and that it is ultimately up to the council member if they want to opt into the program. But as opposed to the member items, which are just sort of decided by the council member, you know, I'm going to give $5,000 to the Roosevelt Island Disability Association or something like that. You know, these are projects that are put on an actual ballot that are sent to anyone who requests one in the district. They can be voted on online. There are paper ballots you can pick up at your council member's office and the community votes. And at the end of the day, the projects that receive the highest votes get funding. There are limitations to the projects. They have to fit into certain criteria. They have to be approved. You know, it can't be something completely, you know, crazy out there, but within reason. But so, that's the main difference, is that one is just decided by the council member and one is part of a fund that is put aside to be voted on by members of the community.
So, in other words, they carve out $1 million out of that discretionary fund.
Correct.
And they, then they, that they then let the community vote on.
Correct. Exactly.
Understood. That's great. So, now, so the question was, what's your thoughts about revising the Board of Elections?
So, reforming the Board of Elections, I think, is crucial to ensuring our democratic process, to making sure that it is transparent and fair and make sure that we are fighting corruption in government. Right now, so much of our elections is mandated by the state and the state constitution. It is mandated, for example, that the top two vote-getting parties have equal control of the Board of Elections. So, for every Democratic Commissioner, there is a Republican Commissioner. Each borough has one Republican and one Democratic Commissioner. I, you know, ostensibly, that was done for each to be a check on the other. I think what it has resulted in more recently is just a lot of gridlock, a lot of, you know, the establishment protecting itself. And we haven't, I think, been able to really reform the Board of Elections in a way that I would like to see. So, I would love to remove partisanship from the administration of the city's elections. That would require a constitutional amendment, again, because the city's Board of Elections is controlled in large part by the state. One idea that has been floated would be to merge the Board of Elections with the Campaign Finance Board, which is the entity that currently oversees the matching funds program that we use at the city level, which is not controlled by the state Board of Elections and therefore has a little bit more leeway. And so, that's an interesting proposal that I would like to, you know, look into. And then finally, one thing the city can do, I think, is establish clearer guidelines and requirements for our Board of Elections Commissioners. Right now, they're very much a patronage job. I think the current Manhattan Democratic Commissioner happens to be very good. A woman named Tiffany Townsend is very smart and qualified. But that has not always been the case. They are appointed by the county parties. And the county party can pretty much appoint anybody they want. So, I would like to see stronger requirements, making sure that folks who serve as those elections commissioners, you know, meet certain criteria. So, those are just some of the ideas that I have. I mean, I, you know, I have seen so many frustrating things from the City Board of Elections over the years. I know there are lots of people who work there who work very hard to make sure that our elections run smoothly, but they are done a disservice, I think, by the leadership that doesn't seem to show a lot of interest in making real reforms that I think could make elections in the city run much more smoothly.
So, it's, so, so the, the issue is that they don't run elections fairly or smoothly, or what happens?
Yeah, I mean, I just think there are a lot of, you know, things that we're seeing in other cities in terms of best practices. So, for example, you know, up until very recently, there were very strong limitations on who could apply for an absentee ballot. Because of COVID-19, those restrictions have been loosened. We finally were able to get early voting because the state was able to pass early voting in 2018 or 19. But again, that was all happening at the state level. The city is still responsible for, you know, for implementing that. And, you know, I don't know if folks remember, but last year, for example, with early voting, there, for example, was no early voting site on Roosevelt Island. So, if you wanted to early vote, you had to, you had to go into Manhattan to vote, which seemed ridiculous to me. They, you know, there were certain early voting sites. I know the one on the Upper East Side in particular was overwhelmed with people, had the most voters assigned to that site of any other site in the entire borough. So, you know, there are things like that that I just, I wish could be run a little bit more smoothly. And there doesn't seem to be a ton of accountability. You know, when there are mistakes made, you know, nobody, there's no accountability, nobody loses their job over it. There don't seem to be real consequences when the Board of Elections doesn't do a good job. And I would like to see more of that. And right now, there just doesn't seem to be a lot of accountability at the Board of Elections.
So, we would need a constitutional change to maybe some of the ideas that we've had.
To change, yes, to change some of them, yes.
Right. Would, would moving the, the Board of Elections into the Campaign Finance Board be a workaround so that you wouldn't need a constitutional amendment?
So, that, that's one of the recommendations. And you couldn't move it entirely, but are there certain functions that the City Board of Elections currently handles that in theory could be shifted over to the Campaign Finance Board, which has a little bit more freedom, which is generally seen as a more, I'm not sure what the word I'm looking for, is it, you know, a more capable agency? So, that, that is one of the ideas. But yeah, unfortunately, to make, I think, a lot of the real change that we would like to see, it will have to happen at the state level because ultimately, the state does control, to a large extent, what the local boards of elections in New York can do.
So, Vicki just asked, what, what do you think of that ranked choice voting?
I love ranked choice voting. You know, we are going to have it in this race for city council in June, as well as all of the other city races. I've been a big proponent of ranked choice voting for a long time. I think it requires candidates to build a broader base of support, which I think is really important. You know, in years past, you could potentially win a city council race with, you know, 20, 25% of the vote because there were so many candidates running that it didn't take that much to win a plurality. And what that means is that 80% of the voters chose someone else. And, you know, the question is, is that really a mandate to govern? With ranked choice voting, you may still get 20 or 25% on the first round, but you then have to be a lot of people's second choice and their third choice. And what it does is, I think, it keeps somebody who has maybe a small base of support but is really disliked by a majority of the voters from ultimately winning a seat. You know, I think it encourages candidates to work together a little bit more. That's not to say that candidates aren't, you know, are going to be completely nice to each other, that we're never going to see negative campaigning. I think that's always going to be part of the process. But, you know, now, it's important not only to be people's first choice, but you want to be their second choice. And so, even if they're supporting another candidate, you know, you would like to earn their support and maybe end up being ranked number two or number three. And so, I think it requires you also to be reaching out to folks you might not normally be reaching out to. But fundamentally, it's just more democratic. It saves money, you know. At the council level, there were never runoffs, but at higher levels, you know, comptroller, mayor, public advocate, anyone who didn't get above 40% had to do a runoff election. That's a completely new election. People have to come out and vote again. It costs more money. This is, you know, this is also known as instant runoff voting because it's essentially a runoff all in the same election. So, whoever doesn't get enough votes, their votes get reallocated and you have the runoff right then and there. So, so overall, I'm a big proponent of the system. The one thing I will say is the city and we have, you know, we're less than three months now out from this election. City really needs to get on the ball about educating people on this process because this will be the first time that the city as a whole is going to be doing ranked choice voting. And I have not seen a lot of education out there about it. I've seen some online forums, but I haven't seen a huge public education effort out there really getting the word out to folks. I know we, as candidates, are taking it upon ourselves to do some of that because it's so important. But I would love to see the city really allocate some resources to getting the word out because if we don't educate people and people don't know that they're supposed to rank candidates, then, then the process is not going to work the way it's supposed to. So, we definitely need to improve education around the issue.
Right.
Right. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. One of your other ideas on restoring trust in government is reducing the amount of money spent on purchasing and procurement. Do you, have you thought about how that would be done?
Well, look, it's, it's a good question. I mean, I think, you know, first of all, I would say, I think we have a really interesting opportunity as New York City is one of the largest cities in the country and certainly in the world. We can really use our procurement system, I think, to really try to demand some real changes in various industries. You know, when we procure food for our schools, for our city agencies, I think we are large enough that if we demanded, for example, more sustainable, a more sustainable process, a more environmentally friendly process, I think that large companies would listen and I think that they would alter the way that they do things. So, I think we have a real opportunity to use the strength and the size of the city's procurement to demand real changes, especially in things like our food production and agriculture. So, I think that's really important. Beyond that, I think we really need to look at how we do procurement in the city. Right now, it is a very convoluted process that requires sign-off oftentimes from multiple agencies. And that process can take a really long time. On top of that, it often takes far too long, sometimes well over a year, for vendors to finally get paid by the city. for vendors to finally get paid by the city. And because of that, vendors will sometimes um inflate their rates because they know it's gonna take them a long time to get paid. And so they essentially bake that delay into their pricing. You know, we've read the articles about, you know, installing a public restroom in a park that cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it just doesn't seem like it should cost much money to make these kinds of infrastructure improvements to our city parks. So I think there is a lot we can do in the realm of procurement reform, making it more efficient. You know, scaling back on the number of agencies that need to be involved, really making sure that we are paying vendors in a timely manner so that they can get paid, so that they can do the work on time. The other thing I would say, and I think this is really important, is right now we have a system with bidding where we are required to take um the lowest bid. And I would like to see us move to a system where we look at the best value. Because sometimes just because something is the cheapest doesn't necessarily mean that it is the best process. If the quality isn't as good and we end up having to go back, you know, a few years later and repair what was done, if the person who is putting in the bid doesn't have the kind of experience, it could end up taking much longer than it should have. So I'd really like to see us shift uh to a system where we look not just at the lowest bid, but at the overall best value. Um, and that may not always be the cheapest option, but I think that it'd be the best option overall, because we would be getting the best work at the best price, even if it's not the lowest price. And I think ultimately, um, that will mean that the city will be spending less money in the long run. So I think if we focus on streamlining, um, shifting to a, you know, best value over the cheapest bid, and really look at getting vendors paid in a timely manner, I think that we can really start to make a dent in, in the problem that is the city's procurement system.
Okay, uh, we have a, a question coming in off the chat from Jeff Gold.
Oh, great.
As you energetically campaign in all parts of District Five, are there any surprising issues or concerns raised by voters?
Surprising concerns? You know, I, I don't know how much is surprising. I mean, what I will say is that I have seen so many people sort of unsolicited bring up their concerns about um vacant storefronts and the plight of our small businesses. You know, and I'm not just saying this because I focus on this issue. I mean, really, when I talk to people, whether it's on the phone or I run into people on the street. And I think it's because it's something that's very visible. You know, when you walk down the street, I was walking down Second Avenue a week or two ago, and I was just sort of blown away by how many businesses along Second Avenue have closed in just the last six months. And obviously, this was a problem before COVID-19, but it's, it's certainly uh an even bigger problem now. Um, and so I think folks are really, really concerned about small businesses. Also have, you know, a, a lot of concerns, obviously, about the homelessness crisis. And again, that's not surprising to me. But obviously, street homelessness is something that, again, is very visible and people see it. And I, and I am heartened by the fact that, you know, a lot of the concerns I hear are very compassionate. They want people to get help. You know, they don't want folks sleeping on the street. And so I talk to people a lot about making the investments in social services and in getting people into supportive housing and, and really allocating funds to that, because we, we are facing a major homelessness crisis right now, even beyond street homelessness, which is actually a very small portion of the homeless population. So many folks who are in shelters, who are in unstable homes. And it's just gonna get worse as the eviction moratorium ends and so many people are, are put out on the streets. So we're, so, so those are probably the two things that I hear from people a lot. And I don't know that either is surprising. But those are some of the biggest concerns that I hear from folks.
Yeah, and uh Andrew Fine gave us another question. It's very interesting. There are seven candidates in the race. If you had to rate yourself versus your competition, of one being the most moderate and seven being the most progressive, where would you rank yourself?
That is an interesting question. You know, it's, it's a hard question to answer, because I, I do, in terms of issues, I think of myself as a very progressive person on the, on the issues. You know, I believe very strongly in investing in our social services. I believe in helping people. I believe in, you know, reforming our criminal justice system and trying to get people the help that they need and shifting away from just focusing on things like incarceration. And I believe in a progressive tax system. And I believe in, you know, millionaires and billionaires paying their fair share and all of, all of those things. But I'm also, um, but I'm also very pragmatic and I'm good at building coalitions with people. And so, for example, on issues like police reform, you know, I, I am, I am strongly in favor of, of reallocating some funding from the NYPD to social services and and, and making sure that there is more accountability within our police department. But I also talk about the fact that my father was a police officer for twenty years. And I don't think there's anybody in this race who knows better and personally um how tough of a job that is. And I have a great amount of respect for, for the difficult um job that it is to be a, a police officer, especially in a city like New York City. And I, so I think when you're able to come at these issues from a perspective of trying to build coalitions and compassion and trying to understand everyone's perspective, I think we end up finding that we have far more common ground than you would think if you just sort of read everything on Twitter, which tends to, you know, shove people to the extremes. So I think I'm very progressive. I mean, on a scale of one to seven, truthfully, on issues, I probably, you know, put myself at a five or a six. But I think that my history of working with people um to get things done and to focus on the issues that matter show that I am somebody who would be able to work with everybody from, from all perspectives to really try to do some good things for the neighborhood and for the city.
Okay, before you
Go, Ellen.
to that question, I, I, I would let, let's ask, uh, how do you distinguish yourself from all the other candidates and, and why should we vote for you?
It's a great question. So look, I, I spent twenty years as a journalist, speaking truth to power. For the last decade, I have been an advocate and an activist, um, standing up to powerful interests, whether it was the gun lobby and my work through New Yorkers Against Gun Violence, um, even standing up to my own party, pushing for real ethics reform in the County Democratic Party, fighting to ban paid lobbyists from leadership positions. I'm not afraid of a fight. And I have never worked for an elected official or for a government agency. I left my job in news recently to focus on this race and this fight full time, because I believe that right now, at this time in our history, what this city really needs is transparency and accountability. And I think that my work over the last twenty years, both professionally and in the world of advocacy, has given me the tools uh to really bring that fight to City Hall. I think we have seen what happens when the most powerful people in the city are left unchecked, whether that was a botched COVID uh testing and vaccine rollout initially, or the confusion around school reopenings. I think we've seen a real failure of leadership in the city over the last several years. And I think that what we need at this point is some real independent leadership, people who are focused on holding people accountable and making sure that we are doing right by the city. So that is what I hope to bring to this office. I think it is something um that none of the other candidates can, can really speak to in terms of their experience, either professionally or in terms of advocacy. And I'm very proud of the work that I've done thus far. And I think that I can bring a real journalist eye um to City Hall.
Thank you, thank you. We need to get to the Roosevelt Island issues.
Absolutely.
Okay, so and it's so, you know, that Roosevelt Island is run by the state. And you'd be, if you got elected, you'd be in the city. So how could you keep RIAAC accountable, given that you're a city person keeping a state entity accountable?
So I think that is the challenge that everyone who represents Roosevelt Island has, especially at the city level. Look, at the end of the day, I know that folks on Roosevelt Island, more than anything, want a real sense of self-determination. And this notion that the voices of people on, on that island are listened to and respected and appreciated. And I know there have been times in the past, um, with, you know, former governors who gave folks on the island more of a voice, where there were, you know, uh, elections for people who could serve to represent the island. And I know that in the last several years, that hasn't been the case. And there has not been a lot of outreach to folks on the island in terms of, you know, really talking about the issues and getting real representation on the RIAAC Board. What I can do is, is be a voice for you and, and fight for those issues in, in any way that I can and be as loud and annoying as humanly possible to get that done. Like, at the end of the day, you're right, you know, there are certain rules that govern, you know, how things get done on Roosevelt Island. You are, you know, it is run by RIAAC. RIAAC is not always terribly responsive and the governor appoints those folks. And so the governor is not always responsive to those issues. I, I think the fact that I have made a real effort to, to be on Roosevelt Island over the years, that I've pushed for our local Democratic Club to have a presence on the island, to make sure that we have meetings and that we are attending events on the island, that I have attended multiple RERAM meetings, that I have, you know, tried to stay engaged in this issue, in these issues, shows that I, I have a real vested interest in making sure that the issues and the concerns of folks on Roosevelt Island are, are listened to. I think that we need to prioritize Roosevelt Island transportation issues and accessibility needs. That means making sure that, you know, elevators, whether it's at the tram or at the motor gate garage are not broken, or escalators are not broken for years on end while nobody does anything to fix them, means helping to protect the quality of life um and the environment, making sure that we're protecting the green spaces. And I think it means advocating for more transparency and more democracy. And if, you know, Roosevelt Islanders aren't actually represented at RIAAC, at the very least, there should be transparency so that residents on the island know how decisions are being made and why they're being made and that they can, you know, express their pleasure or displeasure at those decisions. So, you know, I will be a champion for the island, you know, to the degree that I can do so by just being a loud advocate and regularly communicating with the state representatives and with the governor's office. I will do everything in my power to be an advocate for the people who live on Roosevelt Island.
So what do you see our deeds are right now?
Well, I, I sort of alluded to them before, but I think, um, I think accessibility is a huge issue. You know, I've heard from folks who don't go into the city because they know that the elevator on the Manhattan side of the tram uh isn't working and, you know, they can't walk down those stairs. I, I know that I've heard from folks that since they extended, for example, the ferry to Yorkville at least Ninetieth Street, it's now very, very difficult. At least, you know, in, in the summer was very, very difficult for residents on Roosevelt Island to even get onto the ferry, because by the time it got there, it was already full of people. I know there is frustration that the ferry uh cost is not incorporated into the MetroCard like the tram now is. And I know Roosevelt Islanders had to fight very hard for that. I, I think protecting the beauty and wildlife of Roosevelt Island is extremely important. You know, yes, we have to progress. Yes, we have to make sure that our seawalls are are strong and reinforced um to help fight climate change. But I, you know, think that we need to be really careful, because there is so much beautiful greenery and wildlife on Roosevelt Island. It's something that I know many residents love about the island. And so we wanna make sure that we are protecting both both the animals and the greenery on Roosevelt Island as much as humanly possible. And then, you know, finally, of course, protecting affordable housing. I mean, for so many years, Roosevelt Island was a bastion of affordable housing in the city. And, and we are slowly losing that. We are, you know, buildings are coming out of the Mitchell Lama program. And I think, like everywhere in the city, protecting affordable housing, especially for seniors, especially for folks who are disabled, is gonna have to be a, a priority for, for anybody going forward. So I think those are some of the issues that I think should be a priority for Roosevelt Island.
Kim, um, uh, Joan Brooks just raised another issue that's concerning for Roosevelt Islanders, and that's, do you think that you can help divert the helicopter traffic over our apartments and directly over the tram?
I, I certainly hope so. Um, I, this is an issue, first of all, that's not just uh for Roosevelt Island. Folks in uh Lower Manhattan have been complaining about the tourist helicopters for years. You know, and again, these are not police helicopters or rescue helicopters. I mean, these are tourist helicopters that are just giving folks tours, these, you know, and, and creating insane noise pollution at all hours, at all times of day. Listen, I will do absolutely everything i- in my power. I will advocate with our local congress members. Um, you know, I'm not sure if it's something that Congress has to take up with the FAA. You know, I, I assume that the airspace, you know, around the island, you know, is not necessarily the purview of the City Council, but to the degree that I can, you know, make my voice heard, working with our congressman member Carolyn Maloney and others in the New York delegation to make it clear that we need to do something about it, because it is greatly impacting the quality of life of folks, not just on the island, but, you know, uh, all over uh Manhattan. I think it's terrible, and I will do everything in my power to advocate to, to limit those helicopter flights and, and reduce that noise pollution, because it's awful.
Excellent. So what part, you talked about affordable housing and affordable housing going away. What part of affordable housing could you impact as City Council?
So that is a great question. Um, last year, I testified uh in front of the New York State Assembly on something called Good Cause Eviction. That is not, you're right, a city policy, because unfortunately, because of something called the EARTHstat law, most of our rent uh laws and policies are uh affected by the state government. So it would require advocacy in Albany and with our state legislators. I think the state did uh some amazing work in the last couple of years in really improving our housing laws. You know, getting rid of a lot of the loopholes in uh the rent regulation laws. But one thing they weren't able to pass was Good Cause Eviction, and I'm very, uh, I'm a very strong proponent of it. This would um essentially say that folks in market rate housing could not be evicted without good cause. And part of that good cause would be um an unconscionable raising of the rent. And what would be an appropriate raising of the rent would be determined by a formula, uh, perhaps tied to CPI or some other formula, but something where we would know in advance what those rent increases would be. There would be some continuity. There would be notice, so somebody wouldn't suddenly get a rent renewal with a fifteen percent rent increase. And that has actually happened to me in the past, um, in market rate housing. So I'm a big proponent of that. I testified in favor of it. It didn't make it into the last housing bill, but I would love to keep pushing for that, because I think, you know, this, the Senate did a really great job of advocating for people in rent-regulated housing, and that's great, but so many folks are in market rate housing now. And I don't think that folks in market rate housing should not have a lot of the same protections. You know, just because it's not rent regulated, I still think that, you know, if we wanna truly build community and keep people from being evicted, we can't have unconscionable rent increases. And that's happening to so many people in the city. So, you know, again, it's not a direct, um, it's not something directly related to the city, because unfortunately, the city doesn't have a lot of control over the rent laws. But to the degree that I can fight for that and advocate uh for that at the state level, I will do everything in my power to do so.
Andrew asked a second question. And really, uh, it's relevant, I think, for everyone, including Roosevelt Islanders and Upper East Siders. Can you name a specific issue where you feel one of your competitors has gone too far left? Or is just a bridge too far? And I would say, or too far right, right?
Oh, I like that one better.
Anybody that's fine at the extreme that you think?
You know, yeah, it's, look, I, I, I'm not gonna call anybody out by name. I don't think that's, that's fair, especially if they're not here to defend themselves. I truly believe that everyone in this race cares uh about this district and wants to make it better. And, and that's what's most important. And where there are disagreements on certain policies, we will disagree on those things, but ultimately, we will come together to do what's best for the city. I truly believe that.
All right, back to Roosevelt Island questions.
Sure.
Think that it's possible to get a free transfer for the ferry, given, given that the ferry, that, that they're even debating whether the ferry is paying for itself at this point?
Yeah, I mean, the ferry is definitely not paying for itself. The city subsidizes the ferry tremendously compared to the way it subsidizes subways and buses and other forms of, of transportation. And some of that is just the nature of the ferry. I mean, it obviously can only travel from certain points to certain points along the water, and it can't go through the entire city. So it's a good question. I mean, I, I know that for a long time, for example, there wasn't a free transfer between subway and buses and the tram. And because of the advocacy of, of folks on Roosevelt Island, including, I think, Matt Katz, who was a former RERAM president, they were able to get that done. Um, and so, you know, I think it's certainly possible, but I think before that can happen, the city is probably gonna need to come up with a way, with some sort of a funding stream for the ferry that'll make it more affordable for the city than it currently is. One of the things I've thought about, and I'll be honest, I haven't really dug into the details on this, so, you know, don't quote me on it. But, you know, I have thought about the idea of some sort of tiered pricing for, you know, residents versus tourists on the ferry, you know, so folks who are using the ferry, for example, to get to work or something like that, maybe would pay a lower fare and they could be subsidized by folks who come to the city and just wanna use the ferry, um, you know, to sightsee or for tourism. So that's one thing that I've, you know, thought about, maybe could be a way that we could get some more revenue out of the ferries. So I'm, I'm fully supportive of integrating the ferry system into the transportation system and having one fare across the system. But I think we're also gonna need to figure out how to make, how to make the ferry something that isn't taking so much money away from the city, because right now we subsidize it pretty heavily. We need to figure out, you know, how to do that less.
I, I, I actually think that there would be way more people riding the ferry if we had the free transfer.
I agree. I agree. When I, when I take the ferry, you know, I always have to remember. Luckily, I have the app on my phone, but I get there and I think, oh my God, I have to like get on there. I have to buy the ticket and then I have to have it with me. You know, I can't just use my MetroCard like I always use. So I, believe me, I understand. I think you're right. I think more people would use it if they could just use their MetroCard and get a free transfer.
Right. So Ellen, I think we're on the last question now. So pick a good one. Okay. Not that they haven't been good. Cornell. So you were around when we had the U-Lock with Cornell. And when we went through the, when, when we went through the year of, of uh negotiating with Cornell to get a whole list of, of of agreements. And they're, and they're engraved in the lease with the city. So what would you do to make sure that Cornell would be a good neighbor and keep following up with us? I mean, we're, we're concerned that twenty years from now, when all of us who negotiated this, with, you know, these, these wants were, are no longer gonna be around, possibly. And we need to keep this going. So what would you do to make sure that? How do we hold accountable?
A- a- absolutely. Look, yeah, I, I, I am committed to being involved in, in ensuring that Cornell Tech remains a, a good neighbor to the Roosevelt Island community. Look, at the end of the day, I, I believe that Cornell Tech can do a lot of good, um, but it has to keep up with its promises. It has to contribute to the local school STEM programs. It has to offer local programming for teacher training and other school activities. It has to be a, a good neighbor to the community. I mean, I know myself, I myself, when I've gone to the island, have certainly, you know, um, enjoyed the, the cafe that they have there at, at Cornell Tech and and, you know, and I see lots of people enjoying that, and that's great. But ultimately, we need to be able to hold them accountable. So in terms of how we do that, um, you know, I think, I think part of it is using the power that the City Council member has through the land use process. So when, you know, Cornell Tech has things So when, you know, Cornell Tech has things that they want, for example, from the city, whether it's in terms of funding or in terms of, you know, maybe utilizing other public space for things, I think that's where we can hopefully use some of our negotiating power and some of our leverage to just ensure that, that they are abiding by the rules that were set forth, that they're doing what they are supposed to be doing. You know, I think building a good relationship with the leadership at Cornell Tech, making sure that we are in constant communication so that there are problems, that we can hopefully get them resolved before they sort of blow up and become even bigger issues, is going to be incredibly important. Having that open line of communication, but, you know, ultimately, holding Cornell Tech accountable in, in any way that we can do that as, as a city council, I will, I will fight for that, whether that means, you know, potentially reducing funding for things, whether that means, you know, not approving future projects because they haven't been a good neighbor up to this point. You know, anything and everything that is within my power as a council member to advocate for the people of Roosevelt Island and to ensure that Cornell Tech continues, you know, to, to do the good work they do, but to also be a good neighbor to Roosevelt Island residents, that, that is what I would do.
Right.
Okay, well, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you so much for having me.
And we wish you good luck.
Thank you.
And just wanted to let everyone know that the next time we'll be on will be Wednesday of next week. And we're going to have on Esther Yang, who is running for district leader. And I think she's the, there's only two candidates running for district leader. And Esther has agreed to join us on, on the seventh. So we'll see you then. And remember that your vote is your voice, and to make sure that we hear your voice, your voice loud and clear on June twenty-second. And again, thank you very much, Kim, for joining us.
Thank you.
We're gonna blow out the torch here, and so we can save it for the seventh of April. Happy April Fool's Day tomorrow, folks. Don't get taken in. Okay, folks, we'll see you soon. Bye now.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.